Certainly. Certainly, when he presents it, it is actually the Hazard Mitigation Plan Addendum. Tonight, if possible, we'd like to move that to the regular agenda for consideration for our vote. If we can do that, that would help us as we make our application to the state for hazard mitigation grant program projects.
Absolutely. And just procedurally for commissioners, that would require all of us to be in favor of that. But I think it makes sense.
Can you unanimously add it to the agenda tonight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you wanting us to add it to the consent agenda?
If you have no questions on it, yes, we can add it to the consent. So we want to discuss it here today. If you have questions, you can bring it forward as a regular item. But if you're okay with it, then consent.
Hearing no objection to that, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we add the Hazard Mitigation Plan Addendum to our consent agenda, pending any questions.
Do we need to do that at the meeting itself?
I believe we do it at the meeting.
At the meeting itself? Okay, great. Then we'll go ahead and withdraw that unnecessary motion.
Do you need a second?
No, I'll withdraw the motion. Okay, we can jump right into the staff updates, I think, beginning with the Just Home update. We're joined today by Regina.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm not sure if the [inaudible 00:01:16]. So I'm here to give you a little update of our Just Home project. As you all know, and you'll see on the presentation, Buncombe County was one of nine sites selected to implement this project. We were awarded this back, I think about a year and a half ago. And, as, I'm not sure what.
You have a presentation, right?
Yeah, it's supposed to be. Okay. Anyway, I can go through it. But about a year and a half ago, and then Hurricane Helene hit, we have had up to about 12 months to do the planning. It's two phases to the, to the application to the grant. The first phase is the planning, and the second phase is project implementation. So the first phase of the planning, you have up to 12 months. Hurricane Helene hit, that wiped out most of our timeline. So we made some modifications. My office wound up taking over the planning piece of this project. So we implemented a, a new, pretty much modified plan, which would be about a four-month process, which is a very aggressive plan. What I think is instrumental about the first phase is the way we went about doing it, is we did do boots-on-the-ground. We actually did it in a, in a great way. We had a national consultant who has worked for many years with MacArthur to help us navigate the whole process. And then what was other, I think, key part to the success of where we are now is having a local Buncombe County community advocate, Boots on the Ground, I call them, to help us with that project, and that's Thrive Asheville. So have Gwen Wright, who's our national consultant with Change Matters, and then we have Kate with Thrive Asheville. And we're in the first phase, and Kate will talk about that, the part of this phase where we're at. The second phase to this is the actual selection of a project. And MacArthur will issue, let's say, a $5 million, up to $5 million loan. So we're in the process of identifying what the needs are. If we were to do such housing for justice-involved folks, what does that look like? We don't want to get ahead and say, this is the project we want to do. We want to first identify the needs, because this is the one project, but there may be other projects that the county wants to pursue with some of its other dollars that they may have, and then, but we'll have a needs assessment of how to utilize those dollars. So that was an important, important part of doing the planning phase. And the next piece we have is... Okay. There we go. So now with phase two, the sections of the phase, which we usually would have 12 months, but we did it in four months. The first part was really to identify community folks who are justice-involved. If you're going to do work that you want to know that best impacts your community, you need to involve those folks that are going to be mostly impacted. So we really did a very deep dive in working with the local consultants to identify those folks in the community. And Kate will tell you a little bit more about that. And then we went and identified that next month we surveyed, we also participated in the...
The [inaudible 00:01:31]?
No, no. I'm drawing a blank.
Service providers.
But anyway, I'll let them tell you about that. It was on the front end back in August when we did the...
The SEMS.
The SEMS, that's what it is, the SEMS. So we kind of piggybacked off of that, because that gave us an opportunity to look at where the gaps are in our mental health community, because many of these folks that we find are justice-involved are also dealing with mental health substance uses. So that launched us into doing our surveys here. We're now finishing up our surveys, and then we're launching into finalizing and coming up with a final report and a finality. And I'm going to turn it over to Kate to talk about that work and give you that final update.
Well, good afternoon, and thanks so much for this collaborative opportunity. It's been really a pleasure to work with county staff and to work with and for Buncombe County residents to learn about the driving causes and challenges of trying to secure housing for folks who are formerly justice-involved. As Ms. Herring said, we had a really aggressive timeline. The goal was to collect 400 voices in four months. We aimed to do that for four focus groups. As Ms. Gwen told me to say, four focus groups were those with direct lived experience, the loved ones of those families impacted, service providers, and the community at large. And our strategies were to engage folks through discussion groups and through surveys. Really happy to say that in collaboration with our partners at Operation Gateway, the Sunrise Community, and ABCCM, we were able to really exceed that goal. And as a collaborative group, we've reached far more than 450 individuals and collected more than 400 surveys. So we feel like we have really significant data, and we are excited to share it with the community, and we hope with you. So on December 17th, we're going to present the high-level findings of the discussion groups and surveys. We'll also be sharing with you a very draft, high-level idea about what the Housing Investment Action Plan will be. We're really hoping to have broad participation in this event, because it's sort of the final opportunity for the community to put their fingerprints on these results at the evening. We engaged Ben Phan of Counterflow Media to produce a video project, which we think will be an enduring tool for the community to engage with this topic. So Ben and Thrive's program manager, Crystal Perez, have interviewed numerous individuals which appear on this video, including leadership, like Ms. Herring, and law enforcement, housing providers, including landlords, service providers like ABCCM, Operation Gateway, as I mentioned, and many folks with lived experience. So we'll be sharing that video at this event on that night, and we hope that you will come join us and sit with community residents as they digest some of these high-level findings and provide an opportunity to give us any sort of last input on what are the best opportunities to break the cycle of housing instability and incarceration.
So at the end, this will give us a final report that will help us to identify what project we want to bring forward. So we're still kind of simultaneously doing that work, because, again, tight timelines, and then we will bring it back. So we need to... That's it. Any questions?
And you mentioned $5 million. Is that a $5 million grant or a loan?
It's a loan. It's up to $5 million, and it's a loan, and it's for a one-time project. And so we really want to be strategic in that, in doing that project, because the goal is really to have a win-win. And so we are looking at doing something to engage developers and getting a local, hopefully a local, non-for-profit. But we're still in the finding phases of that and getting some final understanding from the MacArthur folks.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, it's a, the loan is really a...
The county has to pay that?
No.
The county doesn't have to pay?
No, the county doesn't have to pay the loan back. It's, it's a, it's a loan that the county may be the applicant, and I'm not, I'm not... Simply, you might want to come in and talk about that piece. I don't have a whole lot. I'm not the housing person. But it's a loan that we, basically, we kind of pass it to a local developer or partner not-for-profit. We don't pay it. We become the intermediary in that process. Well, I mean, I know, but... So that's kind of the, the process of it. We've been really, like I said, trying to navigate it so that it, it really works for Buncombe County. It really works for our, whoever provider we come in touch with. But we also wanted to always keep the voices of those people most impacted. So whatever we decide, we want to be able to find housing that's going to work for them and not something that we think. That's why this planning phase is the way we've situated, so that it's not government saying what you need. It's them engaging and advising us on what would work best for their environments, and so.
And the vast majority of people that have participated in discussion groups or completed surveys have been folks with direct lived experience of housing instability and incarceration. So we feel like we've been able to really identify the gaps in services and the kinds of housing that are particularly needed for these groups. So that information is what's really shaping this plan and shaping the proposals that this $5 million could be applied to.
So we've gone into jails, we've gone into churches, we've gone into prisons, we've done, with all of that, they have, not we, but they've actually gone into those various crevices of our community and got that information. So I think it's, you'll find it's been, it's invaluable for the work we want to move forward.
I think that was one of the parts that excited me most, is hearing the intentionality behind getting data for our community specifically and figuring out what our gaps look like as opposed to just theorizing about what's happening countrywide.
Yeah. It's been illuminating, and I think it has definitely pointed to both the breadth of need and the depth for certain specific groups. And also some assets, you know, that we have a lot of community nonprofits who are actually involved in this and who are providing great services. We got so many kind of testimonials of the value of the community supports that are being provided, and so that also sort of points to the places in which we don't have that kind of robust response to the problem. So I think the report is going to be really helpful in the long run in kind of seeing where the strengths are and where the gaps also are.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lacey, you're on deck for our Continuum of Care quarterly update.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm just going to jump right in for our Continuum of Care update for the quarter of 2025. I wanted to just start with some general updates on some board actions. So the first, you may remember that the board previously approved the selection of the global industries of Western North Carolina as the fiscal agent for the Continuum of Care. And in this last quarter, they have since approved an MOU between those two entities so that that work can begin. They also voted to appoint Joshua Morrow, who is a COC board member representing our lived experience sector and also part of Sunrise Recovery's leadership, as the COC board rep for the Just Home Advisory Committee. I am also on that advisory committee, serving in my capacity as a county employee, but also providing some COC perspective when needed. One piece of exciting news that I, that I wanted to share, so the new leadership at HACA expressed interest in re-establishing admissions preferences for COC providers who work with victims of intimate partner violence, as well as providers who are working with our unhoused community. These are preferences that were in place previously for quite some time in our community, and they were very helpful for providers in securing housing authority, housing for their most vulnerable clients more quickly. Those preferences were ended under previous HACA leadership, but board members have been working with the current leadership to re-establish those preferences. And at our most recent meeting, we approved a draft MOU, a memorandum of understanding between the COC and the Housing Authority. That MOU then went to the Housing Authority Board, who's also approved it. So we are anticipating now that those preferences will begin again early next year. This is great news for, for folks working to get folks housed quickly in our community. The board approved the Code Purple and Winter Shelter Plan. I'm going to tell you more about both of those in upcoming slides. And then last but not least, just wanted to share that they have appointed the System Planning and Implementation Committee. That is the last of our originally chartered committees. We've added one more committee to the charter that we're also working to seat now. They also approved the Homelessness Prevention Work Group Charter. So that work group is now working with the folks from the Right at Home project to come up with a comprehensive plan for system-wide homelessness prevention services. And last but not least, we've been approving additional members for established committees and work groups throughout the last quarter. Moving on to Code Purple, so we are in the midst of our Code Purple season now, and I wanted to just share some information about what it looks like this year. So the available funding this year was $303,000 total. Buncombe County matched the city of Asheville in that $50,000 each contribution, as we've been doing for the past several years. There was also some ARPA funding from last year's Code Purple effort that was unused, so that's, that was on the table for this year. And I'm also excited to let you all know that Mission HCA made a donation to the Code Purple effort this year for the first time, and we are super grateful for that. The Code Purple work group started meeting earlier in the fall to develop this year's plan. And there are two new parts to it this year. The first is that there are multiple providers offering Code Purple shelter. ABCCM has been our main provider in years past, and they are also providing some shelter this year, but we've brought some, some other providers on board as well. And there is an operations coordinator role that is active, and that person is helping make sure that folks get to the right Code Purple shelter based on which demographic they identify with. And they're also supporting the nightly winter shelter sites that I'm going to talk about. The funding structure this year is also a little bit different. It's a per diem rate that is based on bed utilization. And that operations coordinator, the costs are split between the Code Purple budget and the winter shelter budget. You can see here that the parameters for Code Purple are the same as they've been in the past few years, so 32 degrees or below, including the wind chill, or 33 degrees to 40 degrees if there is precipitation in the forecast, and also for other extreme weather events. I wanted to just share the sites for Code Purple. So as in years past, ABCCM is offering 35 beds at their Transformation Village site for women and women with children. The Salvation Army is also offering 16 beds for men at their Haywood Street location. And new this year, A Hope is offering 20 beds for couples and for people with pets at their 19 North and Street location. And I want to just note, too, that the work to identify opportunities to expand Code Purple this year is ongoing. We know that we, we already know that we're probably going to need some more space, and so that work group is meeting weekly and brainstorming and reaching out to community partners to see what may be possible. So it could be that I'll have another update for you all about that next time.
Lacey, on that really quick, I know we've had some Code Purple days already. Have we reached capacity at those sites? And what happens when those sites, if and when they do reach capacity?
Yeah, so there's nightly winter shelter, too, that I'm going to talk about momentarily. That, those sites have been reaching capacity each night. The Code Purple sites are pretty well utilized. I think that the Transformation Village site maybe has not been completely filled yet. That's historically been the case. And also, ABCCM now has Safe Haven open, which is offering some bed space for women and women with children, too. So I don't think we've had a night yet where we have hit full capacity for Code Purple. But that's part of the reason that we're doing that work, talking with different community partners, to try to figure out some options for if that does happen for us.
Thank you.
All right. And then I wanted to share the information about nightly winter shelter with you all. So the COC board recommended that there was some CDBG DDRF funding that had previously been earmarked for emergency shelter, and the COC board directed that this be put toward establishing nightly winter shelter for this year. This was largely in response to the work that's been happening, that I talked about previously around response in West Asheville, and the need for shelter in that area specifically, but also just expanded capacity in general. So the Salvation Army offered their new Lester location as a potential site, and Safe Shelter was able to partner with the Salvation Army on this, and they are operating that site with 40 beds for men nightly. That site very quickly has hit capacity. And I think Code Purple has been helpful in kind of increasing that capacity for men on the nights that this shelter has been at capacity. In addition to that, Safe Shelter is also offering 10 additional beds in addition to their usual 25 at their 27 Baum Grove location as nightly winter shelter for women. This is going from November 1st to March 30th, 2026, and it is a flat rate awarded to Safe Shelter, and it includes that partial operations coordinator cost. And I also just want to point out that for both of these efforts, all of the providers involved are also taking on some of the expenses for these efforts. So we're, we're very much doing cost sharing this year. Questions about the nightly shelter? It is low barrier. Yes. Yeah. So it's been a great demonstration for us to see that when we have low-barrier options, folks will utilize those as well as our more traditional shelter options. I wanted to give an update on our, our ARPA-funded projects, excuse me. You may remember that the county made a commitment of $875,000 in ARPA funding to go toward shelter expansion, which supported expansion at Haywood Street Respite, expansion at Safe Shelter, and continuing operations for the Salvation Army. So I want to just give an update on each of those three projects briefly. Haywood Street Respite has, they are established in their temporary location. Contracting work has started for expansion of their space at their regular location on Haywood Street. Architectural and design services and hard construction costs are much higher than originally anticipated. But Haywood Street has had some success with raising additional funds to support their work, as well as some additional support toward their operating costs. The North Carolina Health and Opportunities Pilot Program was previously providing a significant source of operational funds for the respite, and so now that that program has gone, there is some financial uncertainty for this program. But Haywood Street has been extremely proactive in working to try to find solutions. They are currently exploring a subscription model that would involve referring partners providing regular payments in exchange for priority access to beds at the respite. This model's been used by other medical respite programs across the country with success, and Haywood Street has also engaged some technical assistance support for development of that model from the National Institute for Medical Respite Care. The Salvation Army has consistently had 65 beds in operation this year, and they're also participating in Code Purple, as you just saw. They received some of the state's most recent round of disaster-related RUSH funding, which I'll talk more about in a moment. However, as it stands now, they have not secured additional funding to sustain operations beyond June 2026. The COC is closely monitoring that situation and working with the Salvation Army to problem-solve, and more planning will be necessary in order for the Salvation Army to continue operations at their current level after June of next year. So there's a lot of work happening to try to find solutions and figure out ways to support Salvation Army to continue their operations.
The, sorry to interrupt, the 65 beds they have, what's kind of the status of, is it people coming in and out, or is it, or are these kind of permanent?
I think they're, they're not permanent, but they, folks are there while Salvation Army's management staff are working to try to help find housing options for them. So many folks are there until they find a housing option, and then some folks stay until they decide to leave for other reasons.
And are those beds separate and apart from their Code Purple activities?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Safe Shelter, as I mentioned, they have 25 beds in operation at 27 Baum Grove. They've stepped up to operate winter shelter at that new Lester Highway location, as well as to offer those additional nightly beds for women. They are also offering day services at their Baum Grove location. Those are geared mostly towards families, but open to anyone. And like the Salvation Army, their existing grants will fully fund their budgeted operations through June of 2026. Their management has made some good progress in private fundraising and private grant applications. They also received some of that North Carolina RUSH funding, and they continue to pursue traditional fund development activities, as well as developing ideas for additional funding. They have contracted with a grant specialist to identify and apply for grants primarily outside of our area. While they are working diligently to raise these additional funds, there is some possibility of disrupted shelter operations in 2026 here as well. The COC board heard all of this information at our November meeting, and we have made a plan for ongoing monitoring with all three agencies, with regular reporting to our funding committee, as well as to the board, so that we can continue to support these organizations in problem-solving and trying to figure out operational funding needs, as well as start to plan, if needed, for changes in our shelter capacity. But we hope we will not get to that.
Can you explain a bit more what the subscription model is?
Sure. So for example, if there is a medical respite in a community, the, the hospital in that community could potentially pay for a certain number of beds that they would then be able to use anytime they needed to refer someone to respite. And as long as their beds are not full, they could refer folks as often as needed and pay that monthly subscription rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before I keep going? All right. Wanted to share some funding updates. As I mentioned, the state issued a request for proposals for another round of that rapid unsheltered survivor housing, or RUSH funding, in September. It was initially for $450,000, but the state ended up having 594,000 available statewide. Our COC provided letters of support for some organizations that applied for funding, and 504,000 of the total amount available was awarded to our COC. Salvation Army received 280,000 for shelter operations, and Safe Shelter received right around 224,000 for shelter support and street outreach. In my last quarterly update, I shared with you all some funding opportunities that the COC... opportunities that the COC was pursuing through Dogwood Health Trust. Wanted to just follow up to let you all know that the COC was not awarded either of those grants. There is work ongoing in various work groups in the COC to try to identify other funding sources for the projects that those grants would have supported. And then, last but not least, I want-
I'm sorry to interrupt before you go on. Did they provide any feedback on that application?
Not, not that I know of as of now. I know that the lead agency was continuing conversation with them. So it may be that the board will hear some at our December meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I wanted to also give you all an update on some federal funding changes. So you all probably are familiar with HUD COC funding. That is yearly federal funding. It is currently the largest funding source in our COC for homelessness support and housing activities. Historically, in our community, this has supported, permanent supportive housing, so that's housing with supportive services for formerly chronically homeless and disabled individuals, as well as rapid rehousing for survivors of intimate partner violence in our community. Last year's funding cycle was originally intended to cover two years of funding to the organizations that received awards, but a few weeks ago, HUD released a new notice of funding for fiscal year 2025. So fiscal year 2025 activities start in January of 2027. They released a new notice that is intended to supersede previous awards. And this new notice brings some significant changes to the program, which will impact our community as well as communities across the nation. I wanted to just briefly share some of those changes with you all. First, in general, the funding priorities for this funding source have shifted to prioritize projects that will offer transitional housing with requirements for supportive service participation for participants, as well as supporting standalone services like coordinated entry and street outreach, case management, employment support, and things like that. There are some very specific requirements for the design of those services that, that this funding will now be supporting. Additionally, each year, our COC, we submit a consolidated application. So individual projects submit application, and then we submit a COC-wide application as well. That is submitted by the lead agency on behalf of our continuum of care. And this year, it will include an expanded risk review process by HUD, which will include a review of public sources of complaints and history of activities that may conflict with the purposes of this current notice of funding opportunity. Perhaps the biggest change is the structure of the funding awards. Historically, HUD COC funding nationwide has prioritized renewal of previously funded projects, which again, in our community, has been permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing primarily. In years past, applicants could apply for and potentially receive up to 90% of funding that was awarded in the previous year. This year, permanent housing, which encompasses both of those services, is capped at 30% of the annual renewal demand. In our COC, permanent housing is 92% of how we have allocated those funds. That lines up with how other COCs across the country have allocated this funding as well. So we will certainly see some impact from this. The preliminary report is that there are 102 households in permanent supportive housing who could be affected, as well as up to 20 households that could receive rapid rehousing, that we would not be able to serve with that service. We did have some notice that this would be happening from national housing advocacy organizations. And the COC Board and the lead agency have been discussing this and monitoring the situation for a few months now, and having some regular discussion about the potential impacts. A small group of board members was formed to brainstorm ideas for how to address changes in funding. And the funding committee right now is also working to analyze and start to problem solve. We are going to need to continue discussing that and figuring out ways to address these changes and the impact that we think we may see. Questions about that?
Lacey, you mentioned or alluded to new requirements. I think in your bullet mentioned required treatment programming. What, what can you tell us about these new requirements?
Well, what I can tell you is that they, it aligns with current priorities at the federal level. I don't know if you're familiar with the executive order that was signed earlier this summer that, that prioritized requirements for supportive service participation. So requirements for case management, participation, requirements for if someone is a user of substances, requirements that they engage in treatment in order to obtain the service or assistance that is available to them. That's a big change from what HUD has, how HUD has structured their funding before. It's a move away from the housing-first model.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's a big change for the organizations in our community that have received this funding, as well as across the country.
Yeah, okay.
Unfortunately, the timeline for this funding, this funding opportunity is very compressed right now, too. So there's not as much time as we might like for planning for those organizations to make those significant changes. But we are rocking and rolling, doing the best we can to, to make the most of the opportunity that we do have.
I'll just make the point, it's, it's upsetting to see that change, considering that our local partners have been looking at the data and, and moving in that direction based on what's, what works and what's effective. And so this, you know, being told we're up on high that we have to shift away from what the evidence shows works is really frustrating.
Yes, I wholeheartedly agree with that. Any other questions?
Well, I'll just share, I think about the progress we've made since. I think it was early 2003 when we had that joint meeting with the city, and then in December of that year is when the recommendations were brought forward. And I appreciate, I mean, you coming on board and giving us these quarterly updates and us watching this progress over time. And I know at some future point, one thing that would help me is, I was going back to try to review through some of those recommendations. And there were a lot, what, five strategies, 100 action steps, I can remember, it was a lot. But at some point, it'd kind of be helpful to see the progress that has been made on those recommendations, just to be able to track that. Because you do, you're always doing a great job of updating this quarterly, but honestly, it's easy to lose track with all those different recommendations. So that could be helpful as well. And I was specifically thinking, when I look back at it, I know Strategy 3 was one that had really stood out to me. It was what improved the system performance through program design. And it was talking about prevention, diversion, coordinated entry, and all of that. So it'd be really helpful to kind of see that progress we've made on that, to help us understand where the gaps potentially are and where we have made strong progress.
Absolutely, yeah. And I can, I can definitely provide that information.
Thank you.
I will just share with you all, next steps, we have a joint COC Board and Membership Holiday Gathering next week on Thursday, from 5 to 7 at the Harris Cherokee Center Banquet Hall. That will include a regular board meeting, but also Board and Membership will meet to talk primarily about the point-in-time count for next year and planning related to that. And that's all, that's all I have for this update.
Has the date, date been set for the point-in-time count next year?
Yes, I don't have my-
No worries, you have it on you.
-to look at the date, but yes, yeah, we, I can, I can get that to you.
Okay, great. And I would just encourage fellow commissioners to be part of that, because it's a really educational opportunity to get out in the community and meet with folks that are experiencing homelessness.
Thank you.
Lacey, to follow up on Commissioner Wells's request, do, on where we are in that, along with those funding changes, do you anticipate any of those recommendations shifting, looking different in light of the way funding is changing? Is that something being discussed broader?
I think that those, those are discussions that are happening right now. And we're still assessing what the, what the impact will be because of these funding changes. So I, I don't know that I can answer that question comprehensively yet. You, the COC has adopted a strategic plan, which aligns with a lot of the goals of the Within Reach Report. And so work is going to be continuing on those strategic goals, regardless what that work may look like, may be different from what we originally planned. But we're still kind of early in this process.
And that's definitely my question, is what will have to shift, if anything?
Yeah, yeah. As, as I know more about that, I'll be happy to share that as well.
Are there other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Kevin Madison's joining us with a Hazard Mitigation Plan addendum. And thank you to Vice Chair Moore for getting us rolling this afternoon while I was on the road. Good afternoon, Kevin.
Good afternoon, everyone. Commissioners, thank you for letting us add this to the agenda for today. I'm going to be speaking about our addendum to the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and refer to it as HMGP throughout the slides and multiple parts. It also is referred to our mitigation grant program, so HMGP. So you will see both acronyms for today. Quick overview of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. It is a five-year plan that is approved and adopted by the county and then our municipalities. Our plan is a regional plan as well. It's done in partnership with Madison County. That plan is reviewed by North Carolina Emergency Management and FEMA. They give us its formal approval. That plan was approved in June 2021 for the current plan. We're also in the process of going through updates to that plan, and 2026 will be our new version. With regards to the plan, that plan directly impacts our ability to apply for Hazard Mitigation Grant Program funding. That HMGP funding is what we're in the process of applying for right now. So that plan was designed in 2021, so we've had updates following Tropical Storm Helene. That's why we're here today. That deadline for our HMGP Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is December 15th, so it's coming up in a matter of weeks. What we'd like to do is get your approval in the 5 o'clock meeting today for the addendum with 11 new additional mitigation actions. Those mitigation actions include a variety of different aspects, from physical improvements for mitigation to reduce hazards, to community education, public awareness activities as well. The actions were developed with our planning teams and have been reviewed with our Tetra Tech contractor to provide guidance on the process. And once again, everything is post-Tropical Storm Helene, so everything is part of our current strategy in the Hazard Mitigation Plan, but also with our Helene Recovery Plan. So all of them are concise with their approach. The 11 proposed actions that we're looking to include are on the chart above. As you can see, some are public education awareness, others are part of our emergency services program. Buncombe County Emergency Services is the lead agency on the 11 actions, and we're working in partnership with them on how to proceed with this grant program. Once again, prevention, public education awareness, property protection, and emergency services are the target areas of the 11 actions. And I'll leave it up for a second, but a couple of key highlights on here is early warning systems as well. So you can notice 22 stream gauges, additional warning sirens, and also weather stations to improve our ability to address ever-changing inclement weather and timely notifications as well. Within the actual mitigation actions, which is attached to the agenda for today, includes a breakout of a couple of different components. One of the key things to highlight, though, is what the project is. So with regards to this one, it is the new ES2 and the chart. That is focused on portable landslide monitoring equipment to look at geological hazards that may be impacting our community. So the target being addressed is a singular hazard, but it is focused on landslides. The target completion timeline is one to five years, once that project potentially gets started. And then, of course, as mentioned before, emergency services to the lead department for that project, which will be then done in collaboration with a lot of our internal and external partners as well. On non-physical mitigation action, public education awareness, one of the components we're looking at is a nearly four-year public education campaign. And that education campaign will be a multi-hazard approach. So it's not focused just on one particular hazard, but it'll be for a whole community magnitude of hazards. We'll be looking at providing education for. Target completion for that project is 2029. And once again, emergency service will be the lead department collaborating with that project. And each of the mitigation actions will have an expansive breakdown as far as what's included, the target dates for completion, and then, of course, if it's going to be a physical action, or if it's going to be an education campaign. So what we're looking to do is take those 11 mitigation actions, include them in an addendum to the existing mitigation plan that's been adopted by FEMA. That plan requires adoption by this board to include it in the mitigation plan, which will then be submitted to our state partners, which they've done initial reviews on as well. Any questions in regard to this?
I had a question about the stream gauges.
Yes.
As I, my memory of all things Helene is mush, like everybody else, but I recall all or most of them were destroyed. But they, they were all owned or installed by USGS, right?
So-
So they're not ours.
We have multiple that are owned, that we utilize, that are owned by federal agencies. We are looking to actually expand that capability by having county develop and own and operate it.
Okay.
They'll be done in partnership with North Carolina Emergency Management. So the maintenance aspect, we're looking to try and get the state to be the lead on doing maintenance. However, we're working on partnerships with the City of Asheville right now on those projects.
Okay. I, I certainly, I'm sure we all agree, most important thing is we get more, and they're better. But at the same time, I, I was just, things that we have to do that somebody else should do is something that's on my mind occasionally, as it relates to Helene, you know? So.
Yes, if they're not, if USGS isn't going to install them, then we should do them.
We just want to make sure it gets done in our community.
Yes, yeah, okay. And, and I think the, the key part with the addendum is it kind of opens the window for that. These mitigation actions that are listed in the Hazard Mitigation Plan gives us a greater chance of success when applying for the funding streams. So even though we're putting them in the addendum, they may not come to fruition, but it's giving us that ability to do so. But with regards to that, we are working with the city to do a collaborative approach with applications.
Okay, thanks.
So, quick question on the PEA3 piece that was added. There's, I know there's a lot going into how folks can reduce specific hazards their home around fire. Are, are we also updating flood evacuation maps and educating households about those routes as part of this as well?
I, I think we're kind of looking at the generalities right now, but I anticipate that will likely be an element of that. It is a overarching education campaign, so it will include multi-hazard approach. So evacuation routes, ingress and egress associated with wildfires and flooding should be a component.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions? All right. We will amend our present agenda this evening.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Kevin. All right, our next item is Reduced to Rebuild Program Update, and Matthew Dieters here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As Chair Edwards mentioned, I'm here to update you on the Reduced to Rebuild Program, but also talk about the future of that initiative. I'm going to go through the program, just as a refresher, it has been a minute since we initially approved this project, and then talk about its impact, and then those considerations that I just alluded to. So when the program was approved on, on June 1st, so it would go active June 1st of 2025, we reduced permitting fees for properties impacted by TSLA across the four primary permitting organizations in the county. And that would be for primary residences, which are defined as places where people are registered to vote, where their address is on for federal state tax returns, things of that nature. These would be within the boundaries of Buncombe County and documented with a Buncombe County or Federal Emergency Disaster Agency Damage Assessment with a rating of destroyed major, minor. And it does not include any expansions of a residence or fees relating to homeowner recovery or Helene agents, or things of that nature. So this isn't for someone to increase the footprint of their home, it's to mitigate damages from a tropical storm. And that, the initial or original sunset date for this is the end of this month, December 31st. This, we put in these specifically tailored criteria to make sure that this fee reduction was going to those who were most in need of it, and that they were the recipients. And that fee reduction was a 50% reduction across the board for air quality permits and inspections, planning, and onsite wastewater, which are the major permitting entities in the county. Some examples of that- Some examples of that, I mean, these could be trade permits, these could be building permits, septic wells, things of that nature, but also demolition in the case of air quality. And essentially, anything that would be a permissible item, we granted the 50% exception to. And when we initially came to you about this initiative, we did a regional comparison with some of our peer local governments in the area. And at the time, most of, not all of those were offering some form of reduction or fee-free permitting program. We've gone back since and looked at it, and now it's about 50/50, with half being back to their normal fee structure and another half being at a reduced or no fee situation. Buncombe County being really the one that's in the middle at 50%. This is as of November 1st. So I wanted to give you a bit of an update on how this program has impacted the community. We've had around 6,000 applications for a reduced permit fee of some kind since June 1. And again, these would be for permits inspections, air quality, environmental health and planning. Of that, about 8% or 472 met the program criteria. And the overall financial impact to the county revenues has been around $26,000. The program is still ongoing, so these numbers have shifted even since this was published last week, or Monday, rather, and it will continue to grow until December 31st. The program has disproportionately impacted those whose total assessed value of their homes are under $500,000. This is according to the 2021 property assessment. So those reductions are going to those who are most in need of reduction. And even those that are above that threshold, a number of those are parcels that may have multiple buildings on them and permits are done per building. So just the way we track the data, it may look at as an inflated value when really it's maybe a $300,000 home on a parcel that has multiple buildings on it. Of those folks approved, 56% of those permit reductions were for homes that were below the 2021 median assessed value of $300,000. And 62% of those reduction recipients lived in Swanonoa, Limestone, Fairview and Reams Creek. And if you want to kind of visualize that, if you think about the county and you're with Asheville in the center, it starts just to the north with We Revel, Beach, those areas, and then goes east and south down through Swanonoa, Fairview, and down into the area around Arden Mills Gap area for Limestone. So the impact on the county's revenues have been far below the initial projections. And there is multiple reasons potentially for that, including the fact that the state had put a moratorium in place in the initial aftermath of the storm. And many folks got their permits at that point. But the policy and internal procedures that guided this program also established good internal controls to make sure that those who'd be in most need of assistance were able to take advantage of it. Are there any questions about the program as it's evolved and impacted the community to date? All right, so before we move into the next section I want to talk about, I just want to take a second to thank those four departments, their leadership and the staff that are implementing that program, and our IT partners that also helped us get the software into a place where we could actually manage this process. We have, want to talk a little bit about bridges. The North Carolina Private Road and Bridge Program was established as part of the Disaster Recovery Act of 2025. And this prioritizes repairers to roads and bridges that are the access point for ingress and egress for communities with multiple residential properties in them. And they provides an application period for partial reimbursement that will go into February, into February this coming year. So those were not within the initial scope of this program. The state has requested an extension and a request for 100% fee waiver on those permit fees relating to those bridges. To give you some kind of idea of what that looks like, that's approximately 67 to 119 bridges, N C D O T. That list kind of continually evolves as they do their assessments. But those will be the ones that will be eligible for 100% waiver. Now, the number of households that those bridges connects to ranges literally from two to 136. And bridges are not permitted on a fixed fee schedule the way that other structures are. They are based on the value of the project. So if you just look at the last 14 projects that I've just sampled, the average cost of that is $438,000 roughly for a bridge, which would mean that the average fee forfeited would be around $4,000. So the potential financial impact would be around $134,000 to $269,000, depending on what those numbers of bridges come out to be. And this would not impact plan review fees. Our permits and inspections department is going to keep those intact, assuming we go forward with 100% waiver.
So a question here.
Yes.
On that, so you're saying that with what we did originally, we were not covering, we were not giving 50% waiver of the fees to the bridges?
So bridges considered commercial, and the initial program was for primary residences.
We were not.
Right, I mean, it's a, it's a bridge to get to their home.
Yes, we have changed that process then. Since the question came up from the state, I want to say around October or so, they raised the question to us, and so we did apply to 50% to bridges. Starting once the state raised that issue, that we were not. So if it was a residential bridge serving Helene impacted properties, we did start the 50% reduction then. In June, we were not doing that, but once it became known to us, we did apply to 50% to bridges.
So when did we start that?
I believe it was around October.
October.
But with the program sunsetting, that will end shortly, and also it wasn't even. Yeah, so you've got some options ahead of you. With the program set to expire December 31st, you know, there are some considerations for you folks to make. You can allow the program to expire that requires no action on your part. You can extend the program as it's currently designed. Or we can extend the program in including its scope and increase the waiver amount. So that would, we could include, you know, a clear inclusion of that R B P program, which would, again, retain the plan review fee and go and take that waiver amount down to like 0%, whatever you'd like for it to be. So you do have some options. Two and three would require, you know, a resolution from this board, but.
And we would need to do that at potentially at this meeting in order to, or our evening meeting in order to meet that deadline? Am I clear on that?
You can do that today to extend it, or our next meeting in January, you can say that you want to extend it as well. So you have options. We can add this to the agenda tonight, and you can give us which option you choose. And then we will craft the message and get the resolution and bring that back for ratification. We can do that, or you can tell us and we can bring it on the January 6th meeting.
Okay.
And one thing to note is that Air Quality's Board would also have to approve an extension of their reduction to reduction or any, you know, additional fee reductions that may be applied. And they would not be able to meet until mid-March. March 12th is the tentative date I have, but they could have potentially a special session to get it even sooner, but that would even then be February. So there would be a lapse no matter what course you decide on demolition permits, which admittedly is a smaller portion at this point in the recovery process.
And on the bridges with the state request, my understanding is that the state realizes there's not near enough funds, right, to cover all the bridge work and that they plan to go back to the legislature and request more funding. That's, that's their, my understanding anyway. And so do you know, are other counties waiving, the state has requested an extension and requests for 100% fee waiver, are other counties participating in that 100% fee waiver?
What I have learned from talking to other counties, they don't have a fee for bridges. So there's nothing to waive.
Okay. Okay, so they're not. Are you looking at some feedback during the briefing?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to get some feedback of where you're leaning. And if you're leaning towards extending the program to a date certain, so you want to say to June 30, we can talk about that, if you want to just extend it and no date, just it is what it is. So we just want some guidance on where you guys are leaning. And second to that, if you want to include the bridges and 100% to the state. If you want to do 50% to the state, we intend to include bridges. We had missed it the first time, so the intent would be to continue that program to include bridges. So the two things we're asking from you, extend to a date certain or just extend period, and then is 100% waiver for roads and bridges or 100% waiver for every permit?
All right, Commissioners.
I'll say I'm supportive of extending the program and doing the 100% waiver for the, for the bridges.
Just for bridges or then 100% for all the permits?
Oh, yeah, well, I'm certainly open to that.
And in terms, Commissioner Roswell, extending, are you thinking about a date certain or just extending until further notice?
What's going to, I'm curious from the staff perspective on that, which is from your perspective, as far as giving a certain date like we just did this time and then having to come back to us, or is, kind of give me some feedback on that.
I would prefer a date certain, so we know what kind of impact we're looking at as we get into budget conversations and think about. That's a huge revenue source for us. And if that goes away, we need to know exactly what we're looking at. So I would prefer a date certain, that way we can plan better.
Okay, thank you.
If we are looking at a date certain, I think ending at June 30, 26, with the fiscal year budget makes the most sense, and that's what I would certainly support on that one.
I'm fine with that as well.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'm seeing a head shaking.
Yeah, that's 100% on roads and bridges until June 30th to align with the fiscal year?
That's the second question.
That's the second question.
100% just on bridges or is it 100% on all? Because the residents that are impacted are also coming into pay, and we're actually giving the state a reduction versus our residents as well. So if we're going to do a reduction, I want us to think through, if you're doing 100% for roads and bridges but not for our households, I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
And other than bridges waiver, are you saying all fee? Like, what do you mean by all, every fee we have?
Essentially, their original eligibility criteria would be the same. It's just be that fee reduction would not be 50%. It would just be feeless.
It would just be no fee.
No fee.
Right, okay.
I was going to say, it's important to keep in mind the data that you've shown where it's, the fiscal impact has been significantly less than we assume. It does tend to be helping low-income homes predominantly. So I think that data is pretty important to keep in mind.
My hunch is that, you know, at this point, it's kind of the ones that are, it's the harder ones that are still falling through the gap. So more than likely, it's definitely going to impact those that are having more of a struggle if we are able to waive this at this time.
Yeah.
Right, that's why I want to make sure we're not saying just waive for bridges.
Right, yeah.
Think about it all this.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I'm supportive of waiving the 100% or all of it up until June to the date.
Until June 30, 26.
Everyone else consensus?
Yeah.
So should we add that to the agenda then?
We need to add that tonight, yep.
Might as well.
We wouldn't have a resolution, but if you add that, then we can create that and have that ratified at your next meeting, but we will start the process effective tonight.
Well, you added to consent. So two items to add to consent.
Thanks for the update very much and bringing this all to us.
My pleasure.
And Commissioners, there's one other agenda item I need to make note of. I was going to wait to open discussion, but on your regular agenda tonight, you do have an item to extend the audit contract. And we need to pull that item for now. We will not need an extension since we do have, the reason we were asking for an extension, we didn't have the compliance data yet from the federal government due to the shutdown. We do have that compliance information, and we can complete the audit by December 31st. So we would not need an extension.
Okay.
But you would have the audit on your January 6th agenda for approval.
Okay.
So will we need to pull that this evening?
It's no longer needed.
It's no longer needed, so we can just take that off without any, okay? But the, it will be on the January 6th agenda. Okay, thanks. Hey, John, John Hudson's got some school funding agreement updates for us.
Good afternoon. I am here to talk about school funding agreement for K-12 operating. A draft of this agreement was included in today's agenda. As you know, funding, right, amount of funding for K-12 local current expense has been challenging over the last several years. While there was a tentative agreement in 2019, rate of change in unrestricted revenue, this agreement was never codified and only used once over the past seven years. So the change in funding from year to year has been inconsistent, seeing change from 1% up to 16%. Currently, the two K-12 schools are funded $117.3 million for local current expense in fiscal year 2026. Ideally, both the county and the school systems would be able to come to agreement on a fiscally sustainable and predictable funding model. As local current expenses provide for school operations, there are other funding streams for capital. There are currently $146 million of active school capital projects funded through Article 39 sales tax per local law. This revenue stream is estimated to bring in $25.5 million this year. State law provides a portion of Article 40 and 42 sales tax for school capital, and that revenue stream is estimated to generate $22.7 million of revenue. Additionally, Asheville City Schools has the supplemental taxing district, which is estimated to bring in $16.5 million to enhance their operating costs. Are there any questions about this funding? As I touched on before, there have been challenges in funding K-12 schools. This has made it difficult to pass a budget in recent years. We have found ourselves without enough revenue and making compromises or tax rate changes to pass a balanced budget that have not had the benefit of planning. Furthermore, it is not sustainable for either the county or the schools to fund large increases or keep the funding flat. Also, the state has not passed a budget this year and has demonstrated inconsistency in timely budgeting for several years, which provides further uncertainty for the school systems. To move toward a funding agreement, staff for both the county and the schools researched other funding methods by North Carolina counties, looking at 12 different counties specifically. We've had extensive discussions with our school partners to reach a point where we believe all parties would benefit. The solution we landed upon was to find a formula based on major county revenue sources, based on timely reporting, in this case, recent actuals as opposed to budget, which generally comprise future year projections. There would be some flexible adjustment based on changes in enrollment or for emergencies. The emergency language is currently being worked out and will be brought back to you. This funding agreement is focused on operating. That's the local current expense. Funding for capital remains in place per statute and is unaltered. So when we look at our revenue sources, property tax and sales tax represent about 95% of unrestricted revenue that the county receives annually. We generally see some level of growth in these revenue sources, around 3% in a non-reval, non-natural disaster year. By using a fixed percentage of these sources, we create a sustainable path forward. So when we look at these two revenue sources and the percentage of the 12 months prior of revenue, we see this ranging from around 35% to 39% over the last four, five years. We initially looked at the budget amount for this year, $117 million to use as a basis, and found that to be 37.06% of the prior 12 months revenue. We reviewed the revenue growth we have seen this year, and that revenue has grown 1.9% with a change in the tax rate. Applying this growth and using that as the basis, it's a 37.76%, a formula that all parties could agree to. The expense would be split among the average daily membership or ADM of the two school systems per statute, roughly 8515. So all three boards would approve, review and approve this agreement. ACS had this in front of their board last night. BCS is later this month, I believe, next. We will bring a revised agreement with completed emergency language reviewed by our legal group for approval at the January 6th meeting. Do we have any questions?
Sorry, John, what happened last night?
ACS brought this agreement before their board last night.
Okay, does anybody know what happened?
It seems like, I mean, they were generally, they had some questions about some of the specifics of the language.
Okay.
But it does sound like they were generally agreeable with, and their superintendent was very, she was, really spoke about how this really works for them.
Okay. Thank you.
And they were involved.
And they were involved in all this conversation. We spent some time with county, city staff, both city, not city of Asheville, but city schools and Bunkham County school staff as we dig into this.
Yeah, I was, I don't want to interrupt other people's questions, but the one thing I had to say was just to commend and thank staff for all the work. You know, we've, myself included, talked in rooms like this about how we should do multi-year budget planning, and it just seemed to never happen until it has and did. And I've heard things also through the grapevine about how, yeah, just how much the finance staff did a great job conversing with the school board and the school finances staff. So, yeah. It seems to, it seems to have worked.
Yeah, I'll just second that. I feel like what we've heard is appreciation from our school partners that the county was open to listen and work with finance staff, and let the finance staff really help lead and drive the process. And so really, kudos and appreciation for helping sort out one of the thorniest issues that we deal with every year around the budget season.
Other questions, comments? Having said in on a few of those, definitely want to echo commending John and Sam and their team and Avril for the diligence that they put into working with our school partners on this. We really, really appreciate you.
Thank you. As John mentioned, there's one section that we're still working through, and that's the emergency adjustments for that. So we'll meet with that school staff before your January 6th meeting, so we can finalize that and bring your draft agreement that we can then adopt, and they can adopt as well.
Trying to define emergency, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, also, there's some language on the first page around the sales, existing sales tax per statute. We're going to look at that language. It did seem like the ACS board last night had some questions about the language. The intent is that those capital, those, those sales taxes statutorily required for sales tax are not included in this agreement remain as, as they are per state statute restriction.
So we can make sure that's clear. The goal is not to have any vague language, but the intent is clear and there's no misinterpretation.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Well done.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, does anyone have any items for open discussion? Avril, regarding December 16th.
The items that we need are moving to tonight.
Okay.
So we don't have a need for a December 16th meeting and everything that's going to hold. So it is up to you. If you just want to come together, we can come together and meet and look at each other, or we can.
I think our staff would greatly appreciate if we did have anything to bring forward on December 16th.
Staff will do whatever you guys want.
We'll greatly appreciate it too.
Staff will do whatever you guys choose.
I appreciate that, Terry. Thank you. Is there any reason around this table that we meet on the 16th?
That's an audit, that's an audit committee meeting. You can do your audit committee interviews, but the rest of the board doesn't have to.
I just know that too. All right. All right, congratulations, commissioners and staff for a little extended holiday break there. All right, if there's no other items for discussion, we will adjourn until 5:00 p.m. Thanks, y'all.